I call a meeting to order, regular meeting of the Elick Municipal Authority at 4:01 PM, Wednesday, June 16th. Agenda for the regular meeting of the Elick Municipal Authority, all agenda items are subject to discussion and consideration, possible action included but not limited to approval, denial, amendment, revision or conditional approval or in hold on part of, Road Call John Williams present.
Karen Johnson present.
Amber Odie absent.
Item number three, make the motion if we approve minutes and purchase orders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You gave up on them, don't you? Item number four, water report given by Water Superintendent Mark Anderson.
Before the month of June, we use 1,30,600 gallons of water for daily average of 34,353 gallons. Last year in June, we used 1,433,800 gallons for a daily average of 47,793 gallons. For the month of June this year, we had no boiled water shells. Last year, we sold 11,700 gallons of boiled water for the month of June. In the month of June, myself along with the front office worked with a DEQ representative to work on the town's lead service line inventory. It's the first phase of an ongoing DEQ project. We have no town water main lines that classify as lead, but the majority of the privately owned citizen lines are unknown. I've been in contact with the Dollar General engineers and surveyors working on a waterline extension for the proposed location, which as far as I know is moving along well. We did have a waterline repair on 8th Street on Monday. That's complete. We received one more bid for the valve replacement project, which should be in your possession now for your consideration and appropriate action.
Okay. Anything else to add on the water stuff over on the board?
I did make up a list of stuff we need to surplus from the AMA. Did it out of our way. The old fuel boxes from truck number two, the bottoms are rusted out on them, those probably just be poofed. We have a steel FS-130 weed eater with no compression, a steel FS-91 weed eater has some compression but will not start a run, and the SCAG Tiger Cat Zero turn has bad rings, pistons, and tires, and basically worthless, we got a complete overhaul.
Okay. Okay, item number five, approve fiscal year '25-'26 budget. I make the motion that we approve the fiscal year '25-'26 budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number six, this will be the opening of sealed bids for the water valve project and for you citizens, that's the valves to quadrant, the town lots, so everybody's not without water when we have something, a leak or something going wrong.
There's one in here and this one.
Yeah, no, this is...
One of the bids is labor only, which is this one.
Here.
Right.
So big to the parts.
Okay, we discussed every single...
So with parts and labor, that is the number on that one.
Eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents.
And then the other one, turnkey in here.
And that was a J and C. Yeah, J and C construction. This first one is Matty's. The second one is J and C, and it is Grand Total, its turnkey of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The, we discussed this sum, me and Mark, I think for fifty thousand dollars difference, we can run and get some parts and stuff. It goes to be at Water Works, correct, Mark?
Yep.
So, you have any thoughts on this?
It's fine.
So...
Make the motion.
I make the motion if we go with Matty's for the, when they go with the eighty-eight thousand, that's, oh, okay, right there, eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents, and that is for, how many valves is the total on that?
There are five of these, thirteen of these, and fifteen of the six inch.
Okay.
Thirteen, four inch, five, two inch.
Okay, so I'm in that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We can make several trips to save fifty grand.
So that's thirty-three valves total? Cause you said five, thirteen, and fifteen.
There's thirty-three of them.
That was the total on it, right?
Yeah.
Item number seven, old business. Do you have any old business? Old business, item number eight, new business? New business?
I have some.
Okay.
I went to the RE, that's called RE, workshop last Thursday, and there are a lot of opportunities, and from my understanding, the amount maximum that we used to be able to ask for was forty-five. I believe that's been bumped to seventy-five because they were finding that most forty-five, the forty-five thousand projects were, it wasn't enough to get them done. So, from my understanding, they have bumped the max to seventy-five. And also, ODOT has several programs that I will type up for the next meeting that we would be able to before and work with in conjunction with the school possibly. I haven't reached out to the school yet, but for sidewalks, they have a program for safe routes to schools, which, and in that program, the school can ask for the maximum of twenty-five thousand, and we can ask for twenty-five thousand, and we would have fifty thousand dollars to put sidewalks in, so the kids would not be in the streets blocking or riding their bicycles to school. So, that is something to think about in the future, and there's just, I have a lot of information from that, it's just, it was all good news.
But the grant that you signed, that I wanted was, it was for forty-five, correct?
The one we were awarded in the...
Awarded was forty-five.
Forty-five, yes.
And the tack, that on the sidewalk deal, school can ask for twenty-five and town can ask for twenty-five?
Schools can actually apply for those, it's funded by ODOT, but I will get that information to y'all individually.
I make the motion that we adjourn from the Elick Municipal Authority meeting at 4:10 PM. All in favor? Let me see. I thought so. Well, I'll be doing that. Call them, regular meeting of the town of Elick Board of Trustees, meeting to order at 4:11 PM. Jennifer, the special meeting of the town of Elick Board of Trustees, all agenda items are subject to discussion, consideration, possible action included but not limited to approval, denial, amendment, revision or conditional approval, if in hold or in part of, Road Call John Williams present.
Karen Johnson present.
Item number three, make the motion to approve minutes and purchase orders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, police department report.
In front of you, you have two different reports. One is all the very first talk, and the first page really doesn't show a whole lot except what it shows. We have fifty-six citations, they're divided into groups in the second page, and it gives you totals at the bottom for the amounts and such. The warrants that were issued, that were given out, and then the second page, excuse me, the last page, gives you the amount of fuel that I burn as well as my hours.
Also, Mark and Mark, Mark A. and Mark S., well, I keep them separate. The surplus of, we have some surplus items back there that we're never gonna use, correct? It's in the way, we need that shop cleaned up to where we can walk around and reover Me and both Marks discussed surplusing those items, and I make the motion if we surplus those items and get them out of here, give them to somebody else that can use them.
To add into that, just to let you know, my thoughts was possibly offering it to our local mail carriers first, if they're not reds and blues lights, and let them go to put on the back of the vehicle to let them be a little bit safer.
Yes, and that's my fault, I forgot then you spoke about that.
And then possibly...
Sorry, y'all.
And then possibly put the rest of the surplus items that we have into the care of emergency vehicle, which is out of, currently is out of Dibble area, just something different with that. But they would utilize them to put on vehicles that are not able to spend a lot of money, and it would just help provide emergency vehicles for its proper life that they need, or a siren box and a, or a light control box.
After we discussed that today, the surplus items, after we discussed that, I got to thinking about it, anything that you didn't want to go there could be sent back to government surplus where we got our part.
He said it probably wouldn't be worth it.
Okay.
However, we could probably let renegade or emergency vehicles possibly move it if they wanted to. If they didn't think they could use it, such as maybe the pushcart, don't fit on any of the earlier, or the late models that they use right now, the models of vehicles or such, they could possibly put it out and sell on our behalf.
What you vote?
I mean, it's a little unclear on what you want to go where. If I was based on what you said, it's a little unclear. So I don't know what you're, yes, but you made a motion that you...
Well...
Give some stuff to here or there, so I don't know what you're asking me.
Where do you get, one...
So if you wanna send the tuck books, the tower, the computer towers and not for destruction, we can vote on that, and you do it in...
Section.
Section, so it's clear on what you're gonna do with it.
Okay. Well, we've already been told the tuck books have to be destructive, so I make the motion that we, the Panasonic tuck books, model CS-30s, be destroyed.
And the fire cars?
Pardon me?
And the computer towers?
And the computers, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The, shoot, one, two, three, four. I make the motion that the computer monitors, the mini battery operated motorcycle with no battery, what is that?
Beats me, it's in evidence room, it's about this long.
I'm sure it was confiscated.
Looks like a five-year-old could sit on it.
Twenty years ago.
It doesn't have a battery in it.
Cause I've not seen it, please, I'm asking, have you? They threw me for a loop. I was wondering what we was doing with the mini motorcycle.
It's been back there taking up space as long as I can remember.
Okay.
It was there before I got it.
Let me start over. Computer monitors will be a sealed bid, the mini battery operated motorcycle with no battery, that'll be a sealed bid item. Dodge wheels with tires be a sealed bid item. One Dodge front bumper body unit be a sealed bid item. So there's four sealed bid items. I make the motion that we take sealed bids on these four items. All in favor?
Aye.
And hers. Okay, and on, we have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have the six items here, which is the two light controller boxes, five on top light bars, four center console boxes, one light siren combo box, two pushguards, one cage, front, back seat divided. I make the motion we surplus them with the exception of offering some amber lights, not red and blues, to our local mail carriers. Is that right? All in favor?
Right.
Are you gonna contact them yourself?
Just forgive me, just a minute.
No, you're fine.
Go with the AMA items.
Pardon me?
The AMA items.
Where are they?
It's in this packet. I don't know if I'm a, I don't know, it's a circle five, it's in this packet.
What's the surplus?
It's the AMA.
Okay.
It's in yours, you can privilege.
I'll get the lift right here if you don't have the lifters.
I don't guess I have the lifters, but we've already did the AMA.
Mine was in the, the town of Elick. It was in the second.
If there's anything that you wanna know about that stuff, I kinda tore it all loose to look around.
But I don't know, we can cover it now.
Yeah, me and Mark did, Mark Anderson and I already talked about stuff.
I thought we could have, it was equipment.
I don't know.
I thought equipment was in general.
We might be able to surplus that one.
So they can't.
We just may get rid of it, I mean...
Did you read that here, water report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thing about that is, is it's actually general, so it's actually the town of Elick's, not AMA.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, the town would surplus it.
Yeah. So that's why I was wondering.
So I go ahead and add this to the surplus stuff?
Yes.
Okay. We have old toolboxes from truck number two, bottoms rusted out.
I'm just reading over your shoulder.
We have a steel FS-130 weed eater, no compression, and steel FS-91 weed eater has compression but will not start a run. The SCAG Tiger Cat Zero turn, bad rings, piston, tires, worthless without complete overhaul.
This one is actually agenda item number seven. So, you can talk about everything else.
And I make the motion on the old toolboxes and both weed eaters to surplus them. Let them be somebody else's problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm just taking up some space for us.
Do you want those put on sealed bid for whatever reason, or do you wanna just trash them because they're about that good a bid?
Surplus is jump or surplus in bid?
Toolboxes, the legs are bent up, the bottoms are rusted out.
I've looked at the toolboxes, I mean, you may as well jump them.
That one weed eater that doesn't have compression, I wouldn't, I would just throw it away. The other one, you can probably give to somebody, and I'll build a fix it, it still kinda turns over, still has compression, but that other one, it's locked up. Unless I'm just not strong enough to pull it, but I'm getting...
So the one with no compression?
The 130 has no compression at all. It seems like it's airbag.
It's jump.
The 91, it'll turn over, but I still couldn't get it to start, so whatever that reason will be.
Okay, I make the motion that we jumped old toolboxes. The steel FS-130 weed eater jump, the steel FS-91 weed eater surplus. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, approve fiscal year '25-'26 budget. I make the motion to approve that budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, I'll see, we have a Grady County Sheriff's Mutual Aid Agreement. The Grady County Sheriff's Office is reaching out through all of its municipal law enforcement partners throughout Grady County with the purpose of providing veteran or official law enforcement services for all persons within Grady County. Title 190S, 547, authorized sheriff's tenure into mutual aid agreements pursuant to the Interlocal Cooperation Act, title 74OS, 1002, to assist or provide law enforcement service to any town, city, and county within the state of Oklahoma, and authorizes sheriffs to deputize municipal law enforcement officers subject to an interlocal cooperative agreement. This mutual aid agreement should be presented to your respectful councils for consideration and approval. After approval, please return before August 1st, if possible, or return before August 1st, if possible, we will finish the steps on our end with the acceptance of the county commissioner's district attorney and filing with Oklahoma Attorney General. I myself think it's a great idea.
It's just a formality, really.
Yeah.
So that they can work together, and the document says so. We just need approval.
True thought?
Yes.
Okay, I make the motion that we accept the Grady County Sheriff's Mutual Aid Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In fact, I spoke to three of them this morning. Nothing bad, by the way, Mark and Mark. Oh, I put your heads on. Okay, item number seven, the surplus of the lawn mower. We've done did the lights. I make the motion we surplus the SCAGs. I'll go back there.
Alphabet?
Yes, alphabet. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number eight, I'm gonna read this and let you kinda feel it in. Item number eight is the revision of code of ordinances. Section A is chapter sixteen, section sixteen through twelve paragraph A, B, and C.
And that adds the water rates.
Aye.
The water rates and the surplus.
Aye. Section B is chapter twelve, section twelve through one, add paragraph K. And you've already signed it, so I got that chapter twelve.
In your packet, that chapter twelve is, chapter nine is health and safety in our code of ordinances. In there, it does not state that it is, it does state that it is unlawful to throw human excrement out. However, it's the way it is worded, it is unclear. So, the suggestion, we have a meeting, I have a meeting with them, and to add the paragraph, it shall be unlawful for any person to throw out, deposit, or bury within the city limits any human excretion, either solid or liquid, or to deposit any such substance in any manner. Just so that that, the paragraph that's already in there is already stated to be illegal, but it is kind of unclear, it doesn't specify. So, the suggestion is that that paragraph be added to the code, that particular code.
So with us talking to DEQ, this will overrule, this will be our own...
Our own ordinance.
We can take action now.
Yes, well, we can take action before, when we find out the ordinance, but...
If you guys, if you guys accept that, I mean, you could take action now, but with this, it would also have the clause that connects everything that is a motion see, which makes it effective the moment that you voted in.
I personally want it effective immediately.
I need a motion that you accept that change to chapter nine, article one.
I make motion to accept the addition of paragraph K. Is it nine through twelve, is that what we're wanting it?
The paragraph K is in chapter twelve, twelve one.
So make them so that paragraph K.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't hear effective immediately.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Do you need a second?
All right, I'll second that motion.
You're watching.
All in favor? Yeah. I second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, section C, chapter nine, article one, section nine, three, twelve, add paragraph of clarification. You want to elaborate?
That's the one I just read.
That's what we just did. That's what they...
Okay.
He skipped over the water rates.
Yeah, we kinda skipped the water rates. I didn't know if you guys wanted to visit that y'all, they had said... I didn't know if you guys wanted to visit that y'all they had said y'all had said in the workshop that you wanted to look at them. So I figured out the agenda in case you wanted to do it this time.
Well, we had already said we was going to raise them, correct?
Yes, but the.
You have to make you have to change it.
Correct.
And you have to tell us what you want to change it to?
Yes.
So.
Okay. We're done there. Uh you said that add paragraph K is the health and safety in human life, correct?
Chapter twelve is nuisances, correct?
Yes.
So paragraph K would would include, would add to that ordinance that's in place unlawful structures to be deemed a nuisance. An unlawful structure is one found in whole or in part to be occupied by more persons permitted by code or was erected, altered, or occupied contrary to law. To unlawfully occupy a structure, you must have lawful utilities. The exterior of all structures must be maintained in good repair and protect the interior from the elements. No person may maintain or occupy any tent or similar structure as a habitation or place of living or lodging upon any residential property or property designed or planned to be used as residential property for more than seventy-two hours in any seven day period within the city limits.
That's right.
With all of that being said, in looking at that, that means your kiddos, if you live in town, your kiddos, when they cancel the weekend in your backyard, it's not illegal.
Right.
But you can't live anyone permanently.
Right.
You can't leave them out there forever if you don't like them.
That's right. And then people get involved when you don't like your kids.
Okay, I I just wanted some clarity on that. I knew we talked about it, and I wanted clarity. Item number nine, the cameras from Sinner Wireless.
I need a vote.
There was no there was no ordinance in our book about.
Okay, there there is no ordinance. Yes. You'll be bear with me.
I need a motion on chapter twelve. We got the motion on chapter nine.
Oh. I make the motion on chapter twelve, section twelve oh three one, add paragraph K. That.
That's all you have to say?
Okay.
Unless you wanna change the wording. Okay?
No, you get the wording.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
On water rates, do you want to revisit that next month, or do you want to do it now? Yeah, with Amber, cause Amber was.
Right, very well.
Way involved with you and that conversation. I don't know.
I think we need to uh revisit that next month.
Okay.
So I make the motion that uh we revisit the uh water rates for uh August media. Twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Is it Mary's? Is it?
It's hot in here.
It is very warm in here.
Emily, you know, reach in for it if you don't mind.
Is it hot it is? Can we get on?
We all.
Maybe I'll stay here.
My fur's up.
I've been getting ahead of myself. I'm sorry for that. Uh item number nine, uh cameras from Sinner Wireless. We brought this up, I don't.
Somebody watched.
Grace, do you have a quote on what it would be for two cameras on the front of city hall?
I've given them to them.
Okay, you already have it.
Yeah, it's an email.
It's an email, farm. It's not like a. I haven't asked for a different.
Do we have a do we? I've got a phone call. I keep forgetting to tell you all this. It was uh what's today, Wendy? Sunday? Is Kirby Smith, anybody from Kirby Smith have a water account? That's nice. Okay, well. I was getting one before I was told. I said pictures on a tag.
Well, I know this would be a general expense, but the camera that would be on the front of city hall would um serve as thus being able to monitor the company if they want. So. Hundred seventy-five for the installation.
Yeah, well, me and Mark Smith have talked to uh me and Mark Smith and Mark Anderson, uh we've talked about it so many times. What what was our total? Seven cameras?
Yes.
Was it seven?
Yes.
And uh I wish I'd thought I'd I could get all them uh totals and stuff for them. We can total them up. Do you remember all the fan marks from here?
Yes, sir.
Did you say no?
Yes, sir.
I'm I'm didn't know I was.
I'm saying times seven. So I remember the twelve twenty-five. Do you remember the question?
What specifically are you asking for?
Well, the problem, the the one seventy-five times seven is twelve point five.
Yes.
And then on top of that, the thirty-five dollars a month, correct?
Yes.
The way I'm understanding.
I have to look at.
That's two forty-five. Two forty-five a month.
So it is so it's thirty-five times seven.
Yeah, so.
Two forty-five. Times twelve is two. So it's about three hundred dollars a year or three thousand dollars a year for that. But the twelve point five is only a one time cost. So I mean, those numbers have to change since the first given us here. It's not a new quote.
Right.
So those are still.
Has anybody talked to Jeff and uh what's his name?
Jay.
Jay. So these quotes are all still good?
Yes.
Your thoughts?
I don't know. Where are you putting them?
Uh.
I don't think we should discuss that.
Well, I don't, I'm like, I'm.
Yeah.
Makes a difference like that would be.
Uh those seven. But two of them will be used elsewhere. But we can add two more.
The seven is only for this building and that building. Only.
The seven?
Yes.
We had to total nine. Correct?
I do not remember.
Seven, the seven is only for this building and that building up front. The nine that y'all talked about before had the two that you were gonna put somewhere else.
Yeah.
Um but then Mark Smith got a lot of quotes for the LPRs. So y'all stopped looking at the nine from Sinner Wireless and started looking at LPRs.
We're getting something here for the LPRs.
So.
And your two separate agenda items.
Yeah.
Right.
At this time, when the LPRs, I want to table that until next month.
Table it up to the LPR?
Mm-hmm, for next month.
Well, we have to get through nine first.
Right, I'm just making a move. Like I said before, we've got so much mischief going on. Uh we got to have cameras. I know it's a big thing, but and then plus if something happens to them, they'll couldn't fix it. Right?
Yes, that's why it would be a lease, not
Right.
not just buying the equipment. That's why there's a twelve hundred dollar installation fee.
Right.
Um and then. Yeah, and then the three or the thirty-five dollars per camera per month. Is the two forty-five.
Okay, babe.
Not the same as yours. Not the same as yours. So I would recommend table it.
Uh. Okay. I guess make the motion to uh table till uh August maybe twenty-five.
Second.
Yes, all in favor? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Uh okay, now uh on the license plate reader for the police department, I make the motion that we table that for uh the August maybe twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Item number eleven, uh old business. Can anybody sign up to talk or anything? Uh item number twelve, new business. Okay, item number thirteen, make the motion that we adjourn at four forty-four PM. From the regular meeting of the public town of Fort 13. All in favor?